Are we starting in 29 seconds or we started? The timer. There we go. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, October 21st, Washington County Clean Water Services Board Business Meeting. Clerk Moss, could you do us the formal honors, please?
Certainly. Chair Harrington and Washington County Board of Commissioners also medias and board of directors for Clean Water Services and all other county services. This is meeting this regular session, October 21st, 2025. Commissioner Fai?
President.
Commissioner Willie?
Here.
Commissioner Snyder?
Here.
Vice Chair Trese?
Here.
Chair Harrington?
Here. Thank you, Clerk Moss. Would everyone please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Next, we'll move on to our first public comment section of today's meeting. Clerk Moss, who do we have who wishes to address the commission for up to two minutes an individual?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. We have Dale Feek and Jill Latre.
I'm gonna make it.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chair, Madam Harrington and Commissioners. I'm Dale Feek. I emailed you early this morning, and I think maybe some of you already looked at that, and what the clerk is giving right now, Kevin Moss has given you kind of a summary of that. So I have two minutes. I appreciate the way all of you during work session held your time. I'll see if I can do as well as you did. I said, please open the two attachments in your email. What comes next after No Kings II by Robert Reich and Heather Cox Richardson's statements. In summary, Reich says, after No Kings, how do we use that power? Dozen simple ones. Organize for 2026 midterms, protect decent hard workers, call your members of Congress, spread the truth. Meanwhile, keep the faith, do not give up in America. Finally, please be sure to find room in your life for joy, fun, and laughter. We must not let Trump and his darkness take us over. Now, in summary of Heather Cox Richardson, over the weekend, as millions of Americans attended No Kings, Trump's social media account responded by posting images of not just of Trump as a king, defecating on Americans, even but also as vice-prime J.D. Vance in a royal crown suggesting American democracy has been supplanted by tyranny that will last past Trump into the future. Wow. In the United States, no man is a monarch. The law is supposed to be king. In January, you can read on there. You can read faster than me, I imagine. Last night, on CBS 60 Minutes, Scott Pelley and others presented a story, former lawyer for the Department of Justice who alleges that Trump administration is destroying the rule of law in America. But White House officials did not appear. The summary of that is, Trump said he was not going to destroy part of the building of the White House. He did. He destroyed part of the White House. He said he never would. That's a travesty on us as Americans. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Feek. Ms. Latre.
Good morning, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. My name is Jill Latre, and I've been a resident of Washington County for 30 years. The vote-by-mail procedure manual states, members of the public may observe all ballot processes except confidential election processes, such as the challenge ballot process. While viewing poor-quality video clips without audio of select areas of the Washington County Election Office, I have seen non-election personnel carry several large pizza-warming containers through the back warehouse doors, a secure area, on an election night. An individual deliver a container through back warehouse doors. Batches of ballots remove from the pallet of already tabulated ballots and set aside rather than remaining with the other ballots to be sealed. A ballot removed from a tabulation machine to a different room. On multiple occasions, the election manager inserted a flash drive into the tabulation computer and then, unescorted, took the flash drive to an area that is not visible to observers. After Election Day in November 2024, over the days when mailed ballots can be accepted with or without a postmark, I and others witnessed the postal carrier deliver, over days, multiple large mail trays full of ballots. However, the voter turnout reported a total of only 24 ballots received during those seven days, a large discrepancy. All of the uniformed and overseas ballots are processed with zero observer oversight. There may be legitimate reasons for some of these actions, but the reasons are sometimes impossible to know, even after speaking with election staff or paying for a public records request, which we've been told we could do after the election. A logic and accurate public test make it clear that without in-person observation, where one can see and hear problems such as tabulation errors or replacing control groups, would go undetected. We ask again, Washington County, follow the stated procedures and allow observers to observe all ballot processes in person. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Latre. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone else?
Is there any other member in the audience that didn't get a chance to sign up for a comment that wants to give it now? Not seeing any hands, are you going to come forward? Is there any member online which should Zoom, which should probably public comment for up to two minutes, give you just a moment to utilize raise hand function? Not seeing any hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. Next, we'll move on to today's consent agenda, which consists of 16 different items. One set of minutes, five items from Clean Water Services, one item from IT, one item from county facilities, fleets, and parks, one, excuse me, seven items from land use and transportation, and one item from human resources. What are the wishes of the commission regarding today's consent agenda? I'll have to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please raise your hand or say aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Next, we'll move on to proclamations. Today, we have a proclamation highlighting the work of the County Information Technology Services Group to proclaim October 20th through October 24th as Digital Inclusion Week. We do have some more chairs off to the side, should we need to pull more up ahead. And I do hope that all of you who participate in this great work will join us for a photo session just after this. So who's going to explain what this is all about?
That's me. Good morning, everyone. My name is Christian Salgado. I'm a Senior Broadband Investment Coordinator in the IT Department, and I've been part of the Washington County Local Government since August 2023. So these are members of the Washington County Broadband Action Team. We formed in June of 2024 with the purpose of expanding equitable access to broadband by supporting infrastructure development and increasing community utilization via partnerships. Our vision is that all people in Washington County will have access to affordable, high-speed broadband services and the skills to utilize digital devices and services to access the full benefits of broadband in their day-to-day lives. We are here seeking your support in adopting a proclamation in honor of Digital Inclusion Week. And so I'm going to go ahead and introduce the three folks from the Broadband Action Team that are going to read, help read the proclamation in order. But first, I'm going to tell you about Digital Inclusion Week. Digital Inclusion Week is an annual nationwide event dedicated to raising awareness about the digital divide and the vital importance of inclusion in our increasingly digital world. This week-long event showcases the collective efforts to bridge the divide and highlights the impactful work being done to ensure everyone who wants access has access to technology and the Internet. So first, we have Tetonian Wallace, Sr. He's the Chair of the Board of Directors for the Washington County Chamber of Commerce, and he's the owner of Nacease Media, a digital marketing agency in Hillsborough, Oregon. The Chamber champions digital inclusion by creating programs that help small business owners gain the tools, training, and online education they need to compete and thrive in today's economy. Next is Paul Rikenzone. He's the General Manager of Hillsborough Highlight. This month is Highlight's fifth anniversary of providing service and contributing to digital inclusion through programs like Bridge, which offers qualified households steeply discounted Internet service. And then finally, Kevin Gien, Community Development Manager at Zipley Fiber and a dedicated leader in regional outreach and economic development. Kevin is a founding co-chair of the Latino Business Summit and active member of the Latino Business Advisory Council, known for his work connecting communities through technology, partnership, and purpose. Kevin brings a strong commitment to equity, collaboration, and local impact. And I also want to introduce Robyn Doty. She's with North Plains Local Government. She's not going to be helping read the proclamation, but she's here in support of the work that we're doing. So I'll pass it over to Tetonian.
Thank you for having us this morning, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. Whereas Digital Inclusion Week, celebrated nationwide from October 6th through 10th, raises awareness about the importance of digital access and opportunity and brings together individuals, communities, nonprofits, and libraries to promote solutions that bridge the digital divide. And whereas Washington County recognizes that broadband is essential infrastructure for the 21st century, opening doors for education, employment, health care, and opportunity, both locally and globally. And whereas digital access means more than a high-speed connection, it means that every resident, from students completing homework, to older adults using telehealth, to small businesses fueling our local economy, has the tools and skills to fully participate in today's digital society. And whereas, a 2021 countywide broadband study showed that while most households in Washington County are connected, thousands of households and students in rural areas still lack reliable service, leaving many families without the opportunity to connect to available digital systems and tools. And whereas, Washington County is committed to closing this gap by ensuring no one is left behind, and all residents, regardless of income, geography, age, or background, can thrive in a connected world. And whereas, the Washington County Broadband Action Team, formed in June 2024, convenes community voices, industry experts, and local partners to expand broadband access, increase investment in digital services, and support residents in developing skills needed to benefit from technology. And...
Whereas Washington County recognizes that closing the digital divide strengthens our economy, builds connected communities, and ensures every resident has a fair opportunity to learn, work, engage, and succeed, now therefore be it resolved that on this 21st day of October 2025, the Washington County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim October 6th through October 10th, 2025, as Digital Inclusion Week in Washington County and recommits itself to advancing digital access, raising awareness of broadband challenges, and working alongside community partners so that every resident can connect, participate, and thrive.
Thank you. I would just like to correct the dates and a couple of things. Here in our nation, October 6th through 10th has been recognized as Digital Inclusion Week, but this is a proclamation to declare October 20th through 24th Digital Inclusion Week here in Washington County, Oregon. And that's both up in the title as well as in the "now therefore be it resolved", as it matches the front side of the work session sheet. So sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to get that out before we have a motion and a second. Anything else?
No, thank you for that clarification.
Okay, great. Well, at this juncture, I'd like to ask the commission for a motion to make this proclamation to proclaim October 20th through 24th as Digital Inclusion Week here in Washington County, Oregon.
I move to make the proclamation.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. And I hope you and any other members of our county or CWS teams or community members involved with digital broadband access to please join us to memorialize this occasion with a photograph. Thank you for joining us today. These proclamations are part of our making sure that we are recognizing the great work that our county team does with others through a lot of collaboration here in our community to ensure that everyone has the opportunity to live, work, play, and thrive here in Washington County. So next, we're moving on to public hearings, and our first one is with regard to a sewer extension reimbursement district. So do we have a staff presentation at all? Yes, good morning. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Good morning, CWS Board of Directors. My name is Steve Chote. I am a project manager at Clean Water Services. Today's public hearing will be to establish the Northwest 111th Court at McDaniel Road Sewer Extension Reimbursement District. So just briefly, what is a reimbursement district? It's a method to finance public infrastructure, providing specially benefited properties with direct access to the public sewer system. So we are facilitating that. For this project, there are three benefiting properties, and they are in the Cedar Hills Cedar Mill Community Plan area, as shown in the picture. These three benefiting properties are on the east side of Northwest 111th Court. They are outlined in blue. There's an urgency for this reimbursement district. One of the three properties has a failing septic system. The project includes constructing approximately 400 linear feet of eight-inch gravity sewer mains, three manholes, three laterals. The estimated total project cost right now is $187,000. The off-site portion, which is the orange dotted line prior to their up of McDaniel Road there, the off-site is the portion that does not directly benefit the properties. The estimated off-site total is $92,565. The other five properties on the cul-de-sac, which is hard to see, they're outlined in a light green. This is what we are calling the, sorry, the extraordinary circumstance area. So they are already served, but they're served through backyards and I guess we'd say uncommon types of connections. So that total of the extraordinary circumstances is $59,022, which leaves the qualifying project cost at an estimated $35,413. So I mentioned the extraordinary circumstances. So the cul-de-sac has the eight properties, as I mentioned. If a sewer line typically would run down the right-of-way down the middle of the street, all eight properties would be contributing to the project. Currently, the five of the eight properties that are already served through the backyards, as I mentioned, that were not able to serve the other three through the same method. So under this situation, the three benefiting property owners share, we're calculating as three eights, or one eighth for each of the three property owners. So the methodology around the extraordinary circumstances just outlined kind of the details here. So typical circumstances, the owners all share, so the cost would be $11,804 per property owner. Currently, with only three property owners, it would end up being $31,477 per property owner. With the extraordinary circumstance, we're looking at three properties paying one-eighth share each, which brings it back down to the $11,804 equal to the typical circumstances. So the cost per property boils down to there's the reimbursement charge of $11,804. If they do early connection incentive within the first year, that's $947 incentive. The net early connection cost would be $10,858. The owner options, so financing is available within the first year for the early connection incentive, as I said. I'm sorry, you get the early connection incentive if you connect within the first year, and you can also finance the private plumbing costs within the first year. Outside of the first year, you can still finance the reimbursement charges or the SDCs, the system development charges. There's no time requirement to connect with the reimbursement district. The interest rate that we have up there is based on the Oregon Bond Index, the AA1, AA+ rating. So in addition to discussions with property owners, we have provided them with the Engineering Study and Assessment Report, bid prices from comparable projects, and the engineering plans specifically for this project. The cost methodology here that we've talked about addresses cost concerns that have been expressed by these property owners and property owners for a couple of other projects we have in the same phase. So today, we're just asking the board to open a public hearing to adopt the resolution and order establishing the Northwest 111th Court at McDaniel Road Sewer Extension Reimbursement District.
I have a couple of questions on the presentation. Do any board members have any questions? You want to go ahead? Director?
Just very quickly, the amount that you stated, the $11,800 something, that does not include the SDCs, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and it also doesn't include whatever onsite construction improvement or things they would need to do on their own site either?
That is correct.
Okay, so it's just the public infrastructure being built?
Correct, just the reimbursement charges.
Thank you.
My questions relate to the neighborhood diagram, so as first shown on Slide 4 or maybe also Slide 6. So if you could go to either one of those, that would be helpful for me. There you go. So one of those three has a failing septic system, so that one is going to have to connect of the three. You've introduced me to something new, hence my question, and that is the orange with the off-site classification. Could you help me understand that situation a little bit more?
We have, in the past, we've been working to keep costs down for the property owners, and this is one of the tools that we have been using to where, when we have a section of sewer line that will directly connect to the property owners, sometimes we have to build some structure to get to that point. So we've been calling that getting to the point of the property owners, our off-site.
Oh, so it's sort of like the right-of-way work that has to happen to get from McDaniel Road up to this?
Up to the first property line.
Yeah, yeah.
That's correct.
Does that is, do you know if that orange property is, or the property that that orange line goes on, do they currently have sewer?
Yes.
Okay.
The ones prior opening the cul-de-sac there, I guess you would say, are all connected via the McDaniel Road sewer line.
And then just a point of interest. Going through the backyards, we were reminded during the ice storm of January of last year that electrical companies used to put the electrical lines in backyards, especially where there were budding properties. So instead of putting the electrical lines on the frontage with the streets, they put it in the backyards, which was a big problem in the ice storms because with downed tree limbs, no sooner would they fix one that another tree would come down later. So I'm, I think I'm curious that for some properties where the lines are currently in the backyards, is that a methodology from prior decades, like the '70s, '80s, '90s? And now the best practice is to go through the public streets?
It is. It's a product of the past policies and the way that construction happens sporadically around certain areas, the way things end up getting built. So we end up piecing some things together like we're in this circumstance now.
Great, great. Thank you very much. Appreciate all that clarification. That took care of my questions. So at this juncture, I'd like to open a public hearing with regard to this resolution and order to establish the Northwest 111th Court at McDaniel Road Sewer Extension Reimbursement District project. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to testify today?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Feek?
Chair, Madam Harrington and Commissioners, Dale Feek. I have two comments. As you know, I attend the Environment and Quality Commission meetings, have regularly been doing that since 2015, and they do septic tank stuff. And they, on their last agenda item, they talked about this and the importance of getting people in the unincorporated areas, but this is incorporated, unincorporators areas out of septic tanks because they create a health hazard. And so the Environmental Quality Commission has a whole program to help in Oregon to do that, and that's comment one. Comment two is my own personal experience. My wife and I live in Forest Grove. We had a development, two and a half acres behind us. They got a, people had a variance from the county and the city to put a septic tank in. And the problem with that is the septic tank spilled, leaked, did all kinds of stuff. And then they ended up wanting to attach to the sewer in the front of our house, but they didn't, couldn't do that. It was a mess. So what I'm saying is, for public health, we need to get people off of septic tanks when possible and connect equitably to it so people's public health and other properties aren't damaged in the process. So I'm in support of this.
Thank you, Mr. Feek. And as you mentioned, this sewer service is done because of public health, and that is why we have policies in place to help incentivize people to, when the timing is right for them, to move off of septic and onto the publicly-owned sewer system. That has all kinds of benefits. So thank you for your comment. Clerk Moss, anyone else?
Is there any other member in the auditorium that we should probably public comment on this public hearing? As you've heard from staff, not seeing one raise their hands or coming forward. Was there any member via Zoom that we should probably public comment on this public hearing for up to two minutes, give you just a moment to utilize raise hand function? Not seeing any hands, Director Harrington.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. And with that, I'd like to close today's public hearing and ask for a motion to adopt the resolution and order to form- the resolution and order to form the Northwest One-hundred-and-eleventh Court at McDaniel Road, Northwest McDaniel Road Sewer Extension Reimbursement District, and proceed with project number seven thousand two hundred and ninety-eight.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Directors. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Next, we'll move on to a ordinance. I would ask for a motion to read ordinance number nine hundred and eleven, which amends the County Code, Chapter, well, please read it by title only. Motion, please.
Madam Chair, you're on the public, the second public hearing item on the supplemental budget, before we go to the action.
F-two, yes, thank you very much. First, thank you for correcting me. We have a proposal to adopt a supplemental budget for this current fiscal year FY twenty-five, twenty-six, and our Chief Financial Officer is here. He made a full presentation in our work session today, and this is one of three planned annual supplemental budgets in our current fiscal year. Thank you, Mr. Steyer. Please take it away.
Thank you for the introduction. Yes, I am John Steyer, the Chief Finance Officer, and you, the board approved our budget and adopted the budget on June seventeenth, and so this is the first of three opportunities to adjust the budget as things change over time during the fiscal year. In this supplemental request, we have seven items. There's two from general government, two from public safety and justice, one item from culture, education, and recreation, and two items from the non-operating funds. Just cover them briefly. On the general government, we have a request increase for the county emergency management, which adds forty thousand dollars for a state homeland security program grant award to provide active shooter training, specifically to develop an active shooter emergency action plan, and provide training to county employees. The second item is the human resources, authorizing a carryforward from contingency of two hundred and eleven thousand dollars for countywide classification and compensation study. The two items in public safety, item number three, community corrections, we had a reduction in state funding for our community corrections department of the grant from the state. This resulted in a loss of eleven full-time equivalent positions and various programs. Item number four is a juvenile department. It's an increase in, in the budget by a hundred and forty thousand from SIP contingency to cover the use of the Marion County Detention Facility from July first, twenty-twenty-five to August fifth, twenty-twenty-five. And this covers the period at the beginning of the fiscal year during which the youth transitioned from Multnomah County Donald E. Long Detention Center to the Marion County Detention Center. Item number five is a culture, education, and recreation item. This year, we closed the, the fund that supports the West Slope Library and turned the operations over to the Garden Home Community Library Association, and this is a twenty thousand dollar transfer of the remaining funds in the fund balance back to the general fund. The last two items are non-operating funds. The first, number six, is a lottery assessment and taxation. It's a transfer of a hundred and sixty thousand from the lottery fund to the taxment, assessment and taxation, allows them to continue the stewardship of the revenue and, and the review of staff as they seek farther board direction on the, the disposition of the museum and the museum items. And then, the last item is number seven, which is debt service, and appropriates twelve million dollars in debt service payment for the full faith and credit bonds issued in July twenty-twenty-five for our major streets transportation improvement program projects. And this concludes my staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Steyer. Are there any board questions or comments? Seeing none, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the resolution and order to adopt this supplemental budget for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to our action items. Do we have a motion for a first reading of ordinance number nine hundred and eleven by title only?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Mr. Barnett, could you do us the honors, please?
Certainly, Chair. Ordinance number nine hundred and eleven, an ordinance to amend Chapter three, point two-seven of the Washington County Code, establishing a commercial property assessed clean energy CPAs program.
Thank you. And this is the first reading, and I would ask for a motion to schedule the second reading and public hearing of ordinance number nine eleven for date certain on Tuesday, November eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Next, we'll move on to our second action item, and this one is to approve the emergency medical services emergency transportation rate, increasing the current rate by twenty-seven percent starting on January first, twenty-twenty-six. And our subject matter experts are here to tell us more. Please take it away.
Well, thank you so much. Good morning, Chair Harrington, Board of Commissioners. My name is Mira Semantel. I'm the Director of Health and Human Services. With me today is Adrian Donner, who is our Public Health Program Supervisor and oversees our EMS program. I do just want to note also that we did a detailed presentation before your board just a few weeks ago, and there is information in our packet that can guide the members of the public who wish to see a longer presentation to that former work session presentation. So, with that, I will turn things over to Adrian.
Thank you. Again, abridged here the seventh of October, much longer presentation. I will jump right in. I'm going to give just a little bit of background, some of the approaches we're taking to help sustainability within the EMS system, you know, look at some of those projects and then talk about the rate increase. As a reminder, in Washington County, our nine-one-one system is a fee-for-service model, which means that the ambulance provider makes income from the fee from service. There's no funding from the county. It's important to note about who pays in our system. So, about seventy-three percent of the transports done by ambulances to the emergency department are Medicare or Medicaid. These are truncated fees, paid what the federal budgetary allowance is. They are not affected by a rate increase within the county. We have another seventeen percent, which are paid through insurance. This is the bulk of funding that's accessible to be affected by a rate increase. And then, we have about eleven percent of folks who are self-pay, this underinsured, uninsured group of people are affected, but we are working with AMR to make sure that we have a strong compassionate care program to help any of the folks in this percentage that are applicable for compassionate care to help pay their bills. We really have two ways within the EMS system to make the system sustainable. The first one is to really increase how efficient our system is. These projects take a long time, but have a greater payout in the end, both for our, for the folks in the county who are using the system, as well as the system partners. The other, which is much faster, but less effective, is a rate increase, and so we are really trying to tackle both of these issues at the same time. So, on the efficiency projects, again, this information was more detailed October seventh for the work session, but we have two big projects that we're currently actively working on right now. One is really addressing the ambulance patient offload time at the emergency departments, so that our ambulances can drop the patient off and get back on the roads as fast as possible. The other one is two ambulances on scene at the same time when it's not appropriate, sometimes it is appropriate, trying to reduce that overlap time, again, so ambulances could be on the road answering emergency calls. For process, a regular and ordinary rate increase is permitted each year, as long as it fits within the formula that's allowable. It, it's a more automatic process through AMR and the EMS team. Of course, this is an outside of that regular process, and so it comes to your board to make the final decision. This is the proposed rate increase, starting again January first, and noting that the next standard increase would not happen before July first of twenty-twenty-seven. And it is, it's a twenty-seven percent increase. So, there's two things I want to really make clear. The EMS team will continue to work on the efficiencies, the, the ones that are actively going now, but we're also constantly looking at the system, working with our partners. We are, again, very fortunate to have strong partners across the EMS system, so we are able to look at how, how the operations work, where there are gaps, where there are areas to make improvements, and that will continue forward. On the other side, AMR has committed to us to, to really look at their rates and their budgets and readdress the, the existing rates as we see if these efficiencies start to really affect the income, or expenses really, in the system. And then, I put before you if the question of, if your board approves this rate increase.
Why don't we start with questions? Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments at this point? Go ahead, Commissioner Snyder.
I guess I just want to reemphasize this point to both the Washington County EMS staff and to AMR's leaders. I think in the work session, I indicated that I would be supportive of this plan, but this is going to be the last time I'm supporting an increase like this. You all must figure out the efficiencies in the system by July of twenty-twenty-seven or sooner. This is not sustainable, and my support in the future will be dependent on you all figuring out the efficiencies. Needs to happen.
Commissioner Willie.
Yeah, thank you for that. Commissioner Snyder, that, I certainly want to emphasize that as well. As, as I've been, as I've communicated in the work session, I am not supportive of this. I believe that the issues that AMR is having, and it's not just AMR, it's ambulance services, I believe, probably nationwide, are having all of these same issues. We've got to fix that rather than cover it up with significant rate increases and money. You know, they have, as you've said, they have committed to evaluating their efficiencies and their profitability and those kinds of things. If, if we fix the, the offloading part of it, which I understand is the biggest issue, the most expensive, does that mean rates are going to go back down? I'd be surprised. So, I, I cannot support this, because I believe we are throwing money at a problem that is not designed to be covered by this. So, we got to deal with the hospitals, we got to fix that, and, and it's on AMR, and it's on the hospitals to do that. And lastly, I just want to emphasize the, the document that was with this slide presentation, the, the prior board action. In twenty-two, we increased the rate nine point six-seven percent. In twenty-three, we authorized the rate to three times of Medicare. I understand Medicare is woefully inefficient or insufficient to cover the costs, so that would be nice to have that, but that probably won't happen. We gave in twenty-four the standard increase per formula in the agreement, so that was about a COLA, probably, a three or four percent increase. I don't know what that was exactly. In twenty-five, earlier this year, we authorized a thirteen percent rate increase to start in July one, and now we're authorizing a twenty-seven percent rate increase. No other business that I know gets those kinds of rate increases and still has customers. So, I will be voting against this rate increase. But I do appreciate the time that AMR has spent with me. You've done a great job trying to educate me. I appreciate that. I appreciate what you do. I just can't support this.
Thank you, Commissioner Willie. Commissioner Trees.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to say that I support Commissioner Snyder's comments. I look forward to collaboration with all parties in relationship to the efficiencies. I think that this is, there are a wide group of partners here that need to be working together to make sure that we, we achieve the goal. I also want to encourage AMR to continue the advocacy in relationship to federal policies around Medicare and Medicaid. So, thank you for that. I will be voting in favor.
Commissioner Fai.
Thank you. Good morning. Great presentation. I think we've been on this journey for quite a bit now, and you smile, Adrian, but thank you for taking us along in this journey, and to you, to AMR, and everyone involved. What I love about your presentation is the invitation that's embedded in your invitation, and that is the slide that talks about the considerations. I think you really are inviting us to hold you accountable, and to make sure that we remember what you're committing to, and I'm gonna commit to holding you all accountable to these considerations and see where you are. And I am gonna also invite myself to say, I intend to touch base with you frequently to see where you are with these considerations, and as one commissioner, how I can be helpful in this conversations. But I really, I, I think you're doing your due diligence. I think you're holding AMR accountable, because at the end of the day, you're with Washington County, and we're accountable to the residents of Washington County. So, thank you for your great work, for your leadership, to you both, and to everyone involved. I intend to support this, as I said, in our work sessions in the past. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'll go last. I want to compliment AMR on addressing the substantial hiring and training needs over these last few years. They've had to work very diligently. It's been a national problem, and they've done a really good job there. I also, excuse me, want to compliment our Washington County Emergency Services Team. Adrian, you're before us regularly, but also compliment your work with AMR and the collaboration so that we understand the cost drivers, as well as the efforts that are really leading, leading the market in terms of nurse navigator, looking at the hospital offload time, and working with your counterparts across the region. Good work there. We all know that saving time with emergency response saves lives. I appreciate the clarity that we have been getting, continue to get, from our team around the reimbursement model. I am not a fan of societal cost shifting, but this is a very clear example of societal cost shifting. This is where the hospital offload times will help reduce the, will allow for more ambulance access across the county, instead of their sitting there waiting to essentially discharge patients or transfer patients from the ambulance service into the hospitals that have some backlog. that have some backlogs in their ERs because patients continue to be held up because of needing rooms upstairs in the hospitals, which involves costs. So the hospitals are trying to shave their efficiencies, but it's creating a backlog, a barrier further downstream. But also, big problem with the federal reimbursement rates for Medicare and Medicaid. For this year alone, 73% of the patients requiring the ambulance transport, emergency ambulance transport, have been, their reimbursement rate is much lower than the actual cost, which means that the county and AMR are required to ensure that we're making up those costs across the remaining 28% of the paying customers. That is wholly unreasonable. It's been a problem at the federal level for years and years and years. We need to join AMR as a partner in lobbying our federal delegation to make course corrections because we can't continue to kick this can down the road. This problem needs to be addressed because it's costing the rest of us, hence these double-digit rate increases that are not sustainable. So yes, I know our team will continue to be diligent in collaborating with AMR on these system efficiencies, but these system efficiencies by themselves will not solve the societal cost shifting problem. So we, as policymakers, need to redouble our efforts to push our federal delegation hard to increase these Medicaid/Medicare reimbursement rates. That is on us. So I will support this rate increase. I understand all the whys and whatfores. We need to ensure that there is good emergency transportation here in Washington County, and this is the only way we are able to act on that vital community need. So without any further ado, I would ask for a motion to approve the emergency medical services emergency transportation rate increase of 20, excuse me, of 27% to be effective as of January 1, 2026. Do we have a second, a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your hand or say aye. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? Raise your hand. Thank you. The motion passes four to one.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to our second public comment period for today's meeting. This is an opportunity for members of our community to speak to up to five minutes an individual, those who have not spoken in the earlier session today. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to do so?
Yes, we have. Mary C., Mary?
Hello, Mary Chocolopoulos.
Yeah? I think you're fairly.
Thank you. Good practice.
Of course, I've been practicing. Want to make sure I'm respectful.
I noticed that, was that correct?
Yes. Been a while. I've had family medical situations. Well, thank you for being here with us today. Start when you're ready.
Okay. Good morning, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. I'm Mary Halkiopoulos, a 20-plus-year resident of Washington County. The Oregon Voter Bill of Rights, first adopted on November 5, 1912, is a comprehensive set of protections and entitlements designed to ensure that all eligible voters in Oregon can exercise their right to vote freely and privately. One of the many rights listed is you have the right to a secret vote. You don't have to tell anyone how you voted. So with that in mind, the question for today is, is your vote secret? I suspect many of us think it is, but how do we know for sure? In January, during a work session with the Elections Office Staff, Chair Harrington asked a very insightful question. In the context of having a voting party, she asked if there was a way to pair up a ballot with a ballot envelope. The Elections Manager, Dan Forrester, answered the question by saying, quote, "Voter privacy is very important, so we don't want ever, we specifically don't want to ever be able to link up a specific ballot with a specific ballot envelope." So there is a point in the process, it's in the opening of the ballots, the return envelopes, that link is broken and intentional. So according to his answer, then, there is an initial link between the ballot and the ballot envelope. So what's that link? When touring the Elections Office, we asked why there were QR codes on the ballots and QR and barcodes on the ballot envelopes. We were told those codes are used by the print and mail houses to link each envelope with the correct ballot style for the address. As you may recall, Washington County has 155 precincts, which often require more than one ballot style, depending on the local jurisdictions, which have their own elected officials or ballot measures. Mr. Forrester stated that each ballot received in the office has a, quote, "unique identifier." Indeed, the Secretary of State's website states, quote, "Ballot return envelopes include unique barcodes that prevent one voter from returning two ballots," end quote. So each envelope links to a voter. As we know, these very same envelopes, which include the unique identifiers, are received and scanned in the Elections Office. Each scan includes a signature check with electronic signature on file, resulting in subsequent acceptance or rejection of a ballot. So here's the first matter of concern. There clearly exists a master list which links every ballot to a ballot envelope or person. So what happens to this master list? How is it secured? Who else has access to it? When we asked Mr. Forrester about this, he was quick to state he did not keep it or have it. But what happens to it? That was never fully answered. Moving on, so while the codes on the envelope uniquely identify the individual, the QR code on the ballot determines the ballot style and precinct. So regarding the ballots, the Secretary of State website for their states, quote, "The ballots, which contain no voter-specific identifying information, are tabulated only after they're separated from the return envelopes. Election officials verify all voters' eligibility prior to separating the ballots from the envelopes and accurately counting them," end quote. That sounds good. So since the QR codes determine the ballot styles based on one's address, one would think that all ballots received in a household would have identical QR codes. Do they? In all probability, you have received your ballots for the current election. I challenge you to examine all the QR codes for the various voting members in your household, either visually or with a QR scanner. I'm sure you will find that each code is different and each is unique to every member of your household. So the second matter of concern, despite what the Secretary of State's website says, each ballot does contain voter-specific identifying information. In fact, every list of ballots received, accepted, or unaccepted after the election includes an associated ballot number. A ballot number can trace back to a ballot image showing precisely how a particular voter voted. It's clear that electronic voting systems compromise our rights to a secret vote. As interested and responsible citizens who care about our rights, our state, and our nation, we can no longer rely on so-called journalists who do nothing but parrot, quote, "Our elections are safe and secure," end quote, in unison, but have never actually looked at the data. Let's vote Amish in Washington County and truly have honest elections. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Clerk Moss.
Hi. Was there any other person in the auditorium that we should probably public comment for up to five minutes? Give you a moment, raise your hand, start coming forward. Not seeing any in the room. Is there any member online via Zoom who should probably public comment on any kind of a topic for up to five minutes? Give you just a moment, utilize raise hand function. Not seen any hands, Chair Harrington.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. And next, I'll move on to board announcements. And as is usual, I will announce our upcoming meetings. Next Tuesday, October 28th, we'll have a work session starting at 1:00 PM. A board meeting that evening, starting at 6:30 PM. On Thursday, October 30th, we'll have a Washington County Roundtable meeting, starting at 9:00 AM. And then we're into the month of November. Tuesday, November 4th, 2025, we'll have a work session starting at 9:00, a board meeting at 9:00 o'clock, and then reconvene the work session after that. On Thursday, November 6th, we'll have a Washington County Roundtable, starting at 9:00 AM. The next day, Friday, November 7th, we'll have a Clean Water Services Board of Directors Work Session Day, starting, excuse me, at 9:00. On Tuesday, November 11th, that is a federal holiday, Veterans Day. We hope all of you will participate in recognizing our veterans. There will be no board meetings that day. On Tuesday, November 18th, we will have our work session at 2:00 PM and our business meeting, starting at 6:30. And in case you haven't noticed, we only have two meeting Tuesdays in November, hence our board meeting the evening of the 18th. Because the following week, the week that includes Tuesday, November 25th, is the Thanksgiving week, and we will not be holding board meetings that day. That's it for board announcements on meetings today. Are there any other board announcements? Seeing none, I would like to ask for a motion to adjourn this business meeting, and we will reconvene in our work session, going to executive session, and I will convene and ask for the exec session motion then. Move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion to adjourn today's meeting. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. We will reconvene in the work session room in 15 minutes, so at 11:20. Thank you.